Here.
Jordan Delong.
Here.
Taptadini.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Dusty Mabel.
Here.
Kenny Smith.
Here.
Tommy Freidy.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Kel Crane.
Here. Mr. Mabel, you lead us in prayer, please.
I sure will. Dear heavenly Father, just to give you thanks and praise for this day that you've given us to enjoy and be here on this earth, Lord, and I pray God denies we come together as governed and body, God, that you give us wisdom and direction, Lord, on the decisions we have to make, God, and that we make right and sound decisions that will best fit this county and what it needs, Lord, and we just keep praising and honoring, Lord, for all you do in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Everybody, please stand for the pledge.
Thank the ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. Go on to line number five, approve, disapprove minutes of the meeting on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, as printed.
Make motion to approve.
Here's a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hickey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Approve, disapprove, committee A reports, and be you, Ms. Tannenbaum.
Committee A meeting, April the seventh, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P. M., roll call, all members present. New business, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hodges, to continue with TCRS employer rate of seven percent for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Should we roll call that? Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Jordan Delong, seconded by Terry Hickey, to approve budget amendments to cover skylights of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred from thirty-nine thousand to unassigned one twelve, fifty-one, eight hundred, three thirty-five courthouse jail maintenance, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Lisa.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Jordan Delong, to move Van Buren County Board of Education general fund one forty-one as presented, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hodges, seconded by Kel Crane, to approve Howard Upchurch County Attorney retainer fee to increase from five hundred and fifty dollars a month to seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hodges, to move four hundred and five dollars from one oh one, four four, one seven zero miscellaneous refunds to one oh one, fifty four, one ten, one eighty seven overtime, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
When you're ready, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hickey, to move seventeen thousand from one oh one, thirty-nine thousand to one oh one, fifty-eight, four hundred, five ten commission, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Jordan Delong, seconded by Terry Hodges, to move nine hundred dollars from thirty-nine thousand to one fifty-one, eighty-two, three ten, five ten, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hodges, to move eighty dollars from fund one twenty-two, thirty-nine thousand to one twenty-two, fifty-eight, four hundred, five ten, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion, these are all commission fees, by the way.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Jordan Delong, local purpose tax fund one twenty to move nine hundred dollars from thirty-nine thousand to fifty-eight, four hundred, five ten, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini. Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Jordan Delong, for solid waste fund one sixteen, to move twelve hundred from thirty-nine thousand to fifty-five, seven thirty-two, five ten, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini. Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hodges, seconded by Terry Hickey, to move fifteen dollars from thirty-nine thousand to fund one twelve, fifty-one, eight hundred, two oh four courthouse and jail maintenance, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Kel Crane, to move seventy-five hundred dollars from one oh one, fifty-four, I think that's supposed to be fifty-four, one ten. I had deleted a extra one there, three ninety-nine, um, to fifty-four. One ten, one eighty-seven overtime, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
What's the overtime for?
It's that payroll, that's the reimbursement.
I'll second.
You second?
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hickey, to solicit bids for mowing of properties, all members in favor, list to be made by the mayor's office, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
That county properties?
Yep.
When's the deadline on that?
Two weeks, when we solicit the bids, or not?
From today?
I know, that's what I'm saying, once we solicit.
Yeah, once we solicit.
It'd be two weeks.
Well, it'd be two weeks, whatever you.
If we solicit tomorrow, it's two weeks from tomorrow's date, right?
Yeah.
Have you got a list already made up for them?
We just got it today. But it'll just have like the names of the places.
They don't have a total of that.
I'm sure we'll have to add the address.
They don't have a total of the acreage?
No, all I got is the list of the names.
Oh, well, go out and just look at it.
What county properties are you talking about?
All of them.
We don't have employees that does the mowing? We don't have employees that does the mowing?
We're gonna look at, we're not, we're just gonna look at it, get bids, and look at it to see what, which would be the cheapest ones.
They, um, we got behind on cardboard last year because of, uh, of mowing and various ventures, so we thought we would at least entertain it to solicit bids to see what it's gonna cost us in order to do that.
Still gonna mow her.
We got two mowers.
Spencer Convenience Center, the jail will still manage this here, just be your other convenience centers, the walking tracks, golly, what else would, community centers.
You've got Comminsville, you've got Sparkman Town, you've got Rock, uh, Rocky River, you've got Bone Cave, you've got the library, you've got Oliverburg College, you've got Fall Creek Falls, you've got the Baker Mountain Walking Track.
Fairground.
You got the fairgrounds.
A lot to mow, and it's, once stuff gets behind, either that's the jump on that, then all the mowing gets behind, so.
This is just a fish.
And then, like I said, it's just to kinda see where we're being at.
We're just doing little fishing. Jail inmates can't mow or something.
They do here.
They do here.
It's a good sale.
Yeah.
They can't go out and mow with the other county.
He doesn't have the available personnel to be able to do that.
And they'll have to have license, they'll have to have insurance.
I don't know that you would want them going out.
Did we get a second on that? I didn't think so.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
No.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
No.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Three noes, seven yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Jordan Delong, to move eight hundred, eighty-one dollars, forty-six cents from thirty-nine thousand to one eighteen, fifty-five, one thirty, three thirty-five for EMS maintenance items, roll call, all members, uh, yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Jordan Delong, seconded by Terry Hickey, to move two thousand, eight hundred, thirty-nine dollars, forty-eight cents from thirty-nine thousand to one eighteen, fifty-five, one thirty, seven oh eight for two portable radios, uh, roll call, all members voted yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
That is for the ambulance service.
It is for the ambulance service, it's for EMS, sorry.
I'll second it.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Motion was made to adjourn.
Line number seven, old business, do we have any old business? Does anybody have any old business? All right, we'll move on forward to new business. Under line eight, number one, approved, disapproved bond for Kathy Simmons, Director of Schools, or, excuse me, Katina Simmons, Director of Schools.
I'll make a motion, approved.
Got a motion, now, Mr. Hickey, approve?
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. I don't know if you heard him.
I did not. All members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, approved, disapproved, County Board of Equalization members, Brandy Delong, Frida Christensen, Monroe Mooneyham, Glenn Bickford, and Mark Cunningham.
I know that there were some questions, I got a few phone calls, and, uh, Brandy Delong's name is on here, she's been on the Equalization Board for over twelve years, and, uh, there is no conflict with her, um, our current mayor, holding his position, so, just make everyone aware of that, that that has been double-checked, that she has been on there for years, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Woodland.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dean. Better roll call her, just. All members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Number three, approved, disapproved, move ten thousand dollars from line thirty-nine thousand to line item one oh one dash five one, eight hundred dash four two five for gasoline, we should short a little on gas.
Will be, yeah.
Will be.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes. Number four, approved, disapproved, move two thousand dollars from thirty-nine thousand to line item one one six dash five five seven one, three one, dash three three six for maintenance on solid waste truck.
I'll make that motion.
What's, what's wrong with the garbage truck this time?
Nothing's wrong with it, just the money.
Okay.
Um. Currently in that line item. Right now, you've got twenty-two, eighty-two left, twenty-two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
And this was after the last bill?
Yes, and I don't, I think there's FEOs pending.
Okay.
To be paid, once we get the invoice, so, I always look at, usually look at how many tires he goes through, and I try to get us through until July first, if anything happens, that we've got enough in there to cover it.
Have we heard anything from the grant?
It'd be.
May nineteenth.
Okay.
Is when, but ARPS is put in.
Um. I'll make that motion, I just, I would ask that.
Motion's already been made.
Oh, sorry, I won't, I would ask that we not spend a great amount, especially if we, before we find out if we got that grant or not.
I mean, on the truck, this is just for like tires.
I'm good with tires, it's just the, anything else that messes up on that.
That's all that usually comes out of that, is just for tires.
Mr. Hickey, second. Roll call, when you get time.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Got some other new business, Mr. Binkley, does everyone of y'all wanna go first?
Well, the University of Tennessee, the University of Tennessee's went to a new accounting system, they call Dash, the way that they used to bill us in the county was line itemed out, you know, social security, retirement, insurance, those type things, when they went to this new billing system, they're going to bill two line items, they're gonna bill for salary, and they're gonna bill for benefits, so what you've got in front of you is where we've taken the money in the budget and moved them to two line items, is basically what it is, so we're getting it to a salary line item, and then we're getting it to a benefits line item, that way we can pay the bills, you know, nothing, nothing's added, you know, all that, it's just moving them to those two line items.
When we do his budget next year, it'll just be two line items that we gotta put this money into.
The new budget, the one that I've already submitted, has got it into two line items, you know.
That's why we gotta do this.
And I thought, I thought that they was gonna continue to bill out line items through the rest of this fiscal year, but apparently the computer don't know how to do that, so I don't understand that, but anyway, that's just me. Anybody got any questions? Thank y'all. I'll second.
Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Summer Matthews, County Director at the Health Department, we would like to spend the remainder of the HERSA ARP funds, um, that funding redid the plumbing and electric at the Health Department back in the fall, um, there's a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars remaining, um, we would like to replace the flooring upstairs and downstairs, um, paint upstairs and downstairs, um, put flooring on the stairs going downstairs, and then, um, add gutters and downspouts, um, if you all give your blessing, then I would, um, work on getting an amended contract to include those items through the state. I'm sorry? Um, no, so I did get a quote to see how much, um, that work would cost, the proposal was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that is also removing all of the, um, old material.
What was the dollar amount?
Proposal.
One thirty-three.
One thirty-three, eight sixty.
Same as the Health Department, what we already had, it's a reimbursable grant, the money is already in the budget, it was just, we would have to, if she don't spend it by the fiscal, end of the fiscal year, that money will have to go into next fiscal year's amount.
Did it, she said it was ARP grant, right?
It's the Health Department grant.
It's through this day, it's through our.
It's already in the bu, in this year's budget.
Yeah.
And we would just have to, on the Health Department side, have to work on getting an amended contract to cover these items, saying that work will be completed.
That's only.
Grant is over in August?
End of August, August thirty-first, so we have to be really quick on it.
Remember, they're not just residential.
I know. And all that baser board, I think, has to be replaced.
Yes, that's included also.
Cause when it's up our waste year, it's all rotted out, no downspouts.
Yep. There are no gutters or downspouts.
Yeah, money's there.
Just wanna make sure we can get it all done there.
Not if you guys don't require an architect for that amount of money.
But you will still have to put it out.
The bid, yes, it'll still have to be put out to bid.
That's just an estimate, you know, but she still has to put it in the paper to bid.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith. Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Thank you, we'll get started on this, so we can get some flooring downstairs and upstairs, and get it in good shape. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else got any new business, Sheriff?
I do, yes, um, our workers' comp, um, we got the quote on adding the elected officials, on what it would be, um, without the elected officials, last year's, um, annual was eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty, if we do the elected officials, it's ninety-three thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, so it's.
Ninety-three thousand what?
Three hundred and nine dollars, plus six thousand, yeah, to add the elected officials for workman's comp. But we need to either a yea or nay on it, because this is renewal time.
That's, that's a no right now.
The sheriff be involved in that too, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freddy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes. Make sure you remind us to change that on the budget.
Oh, yeah, he'll give me all the paperwork and stuff in the next probably two weeks. And that's gonna be up to her if she's driving it, can't take insurance off of it, if she's completely done with it.
What I was talking about right there, and I'm gonna just, this is general information, so we can take it for whichever way you want to. The old ambulance that we've just bought the new one to replace, or the insurance policy comes due July one. If you have the old one on it, it continues for the whole year, you have to take it off before July one, so we, we got a few months before the new insurance policy comes in, so we need to be thinking about what we're gonna do with it.
Talking about the van ambulance, the old van?
Old ambulance over here, I can't even remember what number it is, it's over here.
No, we have not.
No, they, they didn't.
They didn't want it, cause they had to take the letters out, couldn't take it.
Yeah, you couldn't leave certain strip in on it and still be usable, so, um.
Insurance on it just in case they need to use it. Can I sell it?
I mean, just before, before July one, or before we have to renew the insurance.
That would be fine.
If we're gonna take it off, we, we need to take it off. I just wanna give you information now so that we won't be paying insurance on one for a whole year, it's not likely.
These ambulances are going for good money right now.
If they ain't using it, they ain't going to, this, can we sell it?
They're going for really good money right now.
I mean, it's set for years.
A lot more than they were going for before.
I'll make the motion.
Well, I think we need to ask.
I, I'm, I'm not asking for motions, I, I just, this is general information for you to be thinking on that way whenever.
Let's ask Twana for sure, I know that she does not wanna keep it, because there's no need for four ambulances, you run two a day right now, but, um, I think we need to get back with her, and then, um, I do know that Pani has a backup vehicle that they use now currently, and the rope gear is in a, I think a box trailer or something, but, we could ask them, but, um, we also need to look and see what ambulances are going for right now, and the fact that we could really use revenues, so.
One other thing, the fireworks for up there for July third, the city wants to use the grounds again, does anybody have an objection to that?
Sure it's counted properly.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have all of the information you need on it?
Well, on the old landfill, I don't care to bring it up. The old landfill that we have, we're still in the process of trying to work for the life of it to end. Of course, we're still gonna have to do well monitoring for, for a while, but, but for the, the state to come and make sure we keep dirt on it or everything, it, it'll be ending there, you know, and I can't give you the exact date, cause they haven't given it to me yet. You know what I'm saying, in the future it's gonna be. Also, during that time, was approached by the state for the strip mines, the re, reclamation of the street, the pits around there. Well, after we had talked to them and agreed about it and everything, they're gonna cut that down where all of our wells are at. It could cause problems there, you know what I'm saying, there's a possibility, not saying it will, but it's a possibility. So I told the state, unless they would sign something in blood, you know, that they would be responsible for it if, if the ground was cut down, I said, we don't need to do it now. But I probably stepped out of my boundaries by telling them that, so I went right up to y'all tonight to.
Well, the fact that we only like two years of.
Leave it alone.
Of closing this out, we need to let that happen and then revisit later if that's gonna, you know, after the two years, cause if we set ourselves up for another thirty-year extension, that's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that we just really, we don't need to be, uh.
But if they were to assume their responsibilities, though, that would be.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not gonna.
They're not gonna, I wanted to sign us a paper that they would, if they would, it would've been fine, but since it was gonna fall back on us, that we're, we're too close to put it in danger.
And the drainage, they're happy with the drainage right now and all that stuff, so I think we need to let it be for a little bit and then revisit it later.
At the start, yeah, you know what I'm saying, so it could be.
It may be ten years.
That's right, you know, it could be two, three years before, before they get there anyway.
We need to get closed out before we do anything else, too.
Well, yeah, I understand it, it's just around, you know, reclaiming some strip pits around, it's the way I understand. The, the road where you go in, everybody's familiar, I don't know how many is familiar with, you know, where you go in, they gonna cut it down there too. I said, well, you gonna make a new road to go in, you know, I was assuming they was gonna leave all of that there, but it's, it's gonna be cut down too.
Our first year, we made, we approved to have the strip pits done, so. Now, it's brought to our attention that if we do, if possibly if we do this, it could affect our life even longer on the landfill. So, do I hear a, a motion to approve or disapprove to continue with doing the strip pits? Yeah, got a motion to.
About hold them off for two years.
Deny the request of.
At this town.
You got a motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woodley, do I need to roll call? Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taptadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freddy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Um, we've got some more legal issues that we need to discuss, so I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, calls for an executive session with the attorney, the commission, and the sheriff for fifteen minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're going to courtroom.
Yep.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have all the information you need on it?
Well, on the old landfill, I don't care to bring it up. The old landfill that we have, we're still in the process of trying to work for the life of it to end. Of course, we're still gonna have to do well monitoring for a while, but for the state to come and make sure we keep dirt on it or everything, it'll be ending there. You know, and I can't give you the exact date because they haven't given it to me yet. You know what I'm saying, in the future, it's going to be. Also, during that time, was approached by the state for the strip mines.